You guys ready to start?
Sherry's not here yet.
Oh yeah, we need her. No, it's okay. You're the most important person right now.
We need you.
Yes.
Be out of sorts.
Okay, I am ready whenever you are. And Kurt, you're ready?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, well go ahead then. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Tuesday, April 15, 2025 Lawrence City Commission meeting. The first part of the agenda is an executive session and we're going to consider a motion to recess into an executive session.
I move to approve a motion to recess an executive session for approximately 45 minutes to discuss privileged legal communications with the city's attorneys regarding pending litigation pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2. The justification for the executive session is to keep attorney-client privileged matters confidential at this time. The City Commission will resume its regular meeting in the City Commission room at 5:45 after the executive session is concluded.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Finkel-Dai, second by Larson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes 4-0, one absent.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to come back to from our executive session and there was no action taken in executive session, but we do have something to report.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the City of Lawrence in the docket number 25-E-KCE-207-PRE pending before the Kansas Corporation Commission, one, the joint motion for approval of the non-unanimous partial settlement agreements, and two, the non-unanimous partial settlement agreements regarding the natural gas and solar facilities that will be filed on or about April 17, 2025.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Sellers, second by Larson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed?
I abstain.
And I have one exception, so the motion passes three to zero with one exception. All right, the next item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. The City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder. Actually, you know what I need to do is redo. Sherry, can you give the meetings for the rules before I start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. If you could please silence your cell phones to minimize distractions during the meeting. The primary format for accessing or participating in this meeting is in person at City Hall. Virtual access to view or participate in the meeting cannot be guaranteed. The chat function will not be monitored. If you have any trouble, the meeting can be viewed on the city's YouTube channel and cable channel 25. When the mayor calls for public comment, please approach the podium to indicate you wish to speak. Virtual participants should use the raise hand function. When prompted, select join as panelist. There will be a brief delay as your role changes. Once your name is called, unmute and turn on your camera to provide your comments. All comments will be limited to three minutes. Please state your name and zip code before speaking, and the city reserves the right to turn videos off or mute participants. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much, Sherry. All right, now we'll go ahead and move on to item B, which is to approve the agenda, and the City Commission reserves the right to amend, supplement, or reorder the agenda during the meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as is?
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the agenda by Finkelde, second by Commissioner Sellers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who's opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, the first item on our Agenda C is to recognize the 50th anniversary of the Watkins Museum of History, and today I believe we have Will Haynes and Steve Nowak here to perhaps receive the proclamation and say a few words, or no? Might be early for him.
Maybe come back.
Sure. I'll give it a second, and then we'll go ahead and do the second proclamation just in case. Second proclamation is to The second proclamation is to proclaim April twenty-second, 2025, as Earth Day, and I know that Kathy Richardson is here to speak to this, so if you would, please step to the podium and give us some insight on this proclamation today.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Kathy Richardson, the city's Sustainability Director and the champion for the environmental sustainability commitment within our strategic plan. I also had Will Haynes as part of my proclamation. Maybe he'll come here a little bit, but I do want to just give a shout out to Will Haynes and intern he's working with, who are leading the coordination of the Earth Day Fair, and also a shout out to Don Bueller and Kim Bellamir, who are leading the coordination of the Kansas Riverbank Cleanup for Earth Day. They very much wanted to be here tonight, but they had another event that they were attending. The City of Lawrence is excited to celebrate Earth Day 2025 with community-wide events and activities throughout the month of April. These events move the needle of our strategic plan, KPI UI thirteen, which is the number of events that celebrate and enhance area environmental sustainability. This KPI shared between the unmistakable identity outcome and the environmental sustainability commitment. We would like to highlight a couple of events, Earth Day events for this weekend, to extend an invitation to you and the whole community to attend. So the first one is the Kansas Riverbank Cleanup, which is this Saturday, April the nineteenth, from nine AM to one PM. Please join us in the city parking lot on the southeast corner of North Second and Locust Street. From there, the participants are going to be divided into teams to pick up trash along the riverbank below the Bowersock Dam. This event is hosted by Friends of the Call, and it's in partnership with the City of Lawrence, the Merck Co-op, and the Nature Conservancy in Kansas. Also on Saturday, April nineteenth, in the afternoon, is the Earth Day Fair, from one PM to four PM. The fair will include a wide range of crafts, activities, and information on our planet's amazing natural resources and how we can protect them. There are over thirty organizations that are signed up to participate in the Earth Day Fair, and again, this event is hosted by the Watkins Museum of History in partnership with the City of Lawrence. As a reminder, there are many other Earth Day events going on this month, and they are listed on our city's Earth Day webpage. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate you putting our words into action, and it sounds like there's going to be a lot of activity and some learning and some actual boots on the ground, so I appreciate that. I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas the first Earth Day occurred fifty-five years ago and has been celebrated annually across the globe to confront our most pressing environmental issues, unite around a shared mission of protecting the environment we live in, and provide future generations with cleaner air and water, a healthy environment, and a safer and sustainable future. And whereas the global community still faces challenges, including climate change, environmental destruction, deforestation, and air pollution, excuse me, and air and water pollution, and whereas together we can overcome these environmental challenges and protect our natural resources in order to pass them on to future generations. And whereas the Lawrence Strategic Plan highlights environmental sustainability as a core commitment, meaning that we consider the environmental consequences of every decision, big and small, knowing that our actions have impacts beyond our boundaries. We protect and restore our ecosystem to make it healthier and more balanced for future generations, and this commitment, along with the other five commitments of the strategic plan, guide all budget and policy decisions. And whereas Earth Day offers a valuable opportunity to renew our commitment to preserving and protecting our earth through community service, responsible stewardship, and daily practices. Now therefore, I'm Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty-second, 2025, as Earth Day, and urge residents, businesses, and institutions to celebrate the earth through one's own actions and in support of the city's ongoing sustainability initiatives. Thank you. Okay, I'm going to just move on to the next proclamation, which is to proclaim the week of April twenty-first to the twenty-fifth of 2025 as Tree City USA Week, and Friday, April twenty-fifth, as Arbor Day. And I believe we have a forestry representative, there's no direct name, please.
Tyler Fike.
Tyler, it's nice to meet you. Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If you'd like to give any words on all this important activity related to our trees, I love that.
So this is the City of Lawrence forty-seventh year receiving the Tree City USA Award, and this proclamation is a requirement for our forty-eighth award, which we will apply for at the end of 2025. This year, just in March, we distributed approximately a thousand sapling trees to residents during the Lawrence St. Patrick's Day Parade, always a really popular event that we've done for the last five years or so. Friday, April twenty-fifth, is Arbor Day coming up next week, and we have activities planned that day, tree plantings in Oak Hill and Memorial Park Cemetery, as well as Lion Park in North Lawrence and South Park as well. And the Forestry Division's activities support the outcome of unmistakable identity, and that's through outcome, or KPI UI fourteen, and that is the number of trees planted, pruned, removed, to promote a healthy urban canopy. And to that end, in twenty-four, Forestry Division planted one thousand two hundred and fifty-seven trees, pruned one thousand four hundred and eighty-three, and removed eight hundred and thirty-four trees.
That's a lot of activity. So how was our canopy doing after all of the pestilence?
You know, we've been responding for several years to the Emerald Ash Borer, so there have been, you know, I think the city's responding well to that. We're starting to see those trees decline a lot more on private property. So if we're looking at the canopy as a whole, we're probably starting to see some holes in there, so that's what that St. Patrick's Day event is meant to do, is kind of reforest those areas that are missing those trees.
Well, a lot of people are missing them, but it's important to keep all the others safe, and I appreciate you coming up and speaking to this, and I'm going to go ahead and read the proclamation so we can apply again. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the year 2025 marks the one hundred and fifty-third anniversary of this holiday called Arbor Day, and was first observed with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas Lawrence, Kansas, has been recognized in its forty-seventh year as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation and the Kansas Forest Service, and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, I'm Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, to proclaim the week of April twenty-first to the twenty-fifth, 2025, as Tree City USA Week, and April twenty-fifth, 2025, as Arbor Day, and urge all citizens to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, to support our city's community forestry program, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of present and future generations. Thank you. Oh, good, all right, so we have the proclamation concerning the Watkins Museum, and I believe Steve Nowak is here. Nowak, I'm sorry.
Hello, sir. We started a little bit on time, so I apologize, but...
Yes, I know, and that caught me off guard. I apologize. Well, thank you. For fifty years, the Watkins Museum has been a fixture at the south end of downtown here in Lawrence, established in nineteen seventy-five in the historic Watkins National Bank and Land Mortgage Company building, part of a strong community preservation effort in order to preserve that building and save it for public use for the community of Lawrence. The Douglas County Historical Society took ownership of that building, and in partnership with Douglas County, has been providing a history museum for Lawrence and Douglas County at that site. On April twenty-sixth of this year, we will officially kick off our fiftieth anniversary celebration with a birthday party at the museum, but that will be just the beginning of celebrations that will last throughout the rest of the year. We have special exhibitions planned, we have special activities, opportunities to involve families, special looks at interesting items in our collection, and also different kinds of partnership activities that will help recognize the many, many organizations, including the City of Lawrence and the Parks and Recreation Department, that we have worked with over the years that have helped to make our organization a success. And while looking backwards to recognize all we have achieved in the past fifty years, we're also making this an opportunity to look forward and think of how we can provide better service to our community today and in the future.
Thank you. Well, that's, those are great words, go ahead.
Steve, can you give just a little history for those about the city's relationship with the building and...
Yes, I forget that not everyone knows this. The Watkins Museum is about to become the longest tenant in that, in the Watkins Building, but we're not the only tenant. From eighteen eighty-eight, when the building opened, until nineteen twenty-nine, it served as the headquarters of J.B. Watkins Businesses. And then from nineteen thirty until nineteen seventy, that building was Lawrence City Hall. As a matter of fact, our designation on the National Register of Historic Places calls it the Watkins National Bank Building and Old Lawrence City Hall. So that part of the building's history is a permanent part of the legacy of that structure here in the community.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate you pointing that out. The building's spectacular, the people in it are even better. Sorry you're struggling with some, you know, financial issues right now, but we are all going to face those.
We're, yeah, we're not the only ones.
We'll rise from the ashes of what's happening now and really move forward, but the important historical impact that that place has on a tiny little basis every time somebody walks in the door is really special, and it being there at the corner is, makes Lawrence what it is, so thanks for being a part of that.
Thank you.
So I'm going to go ahead and read your proclamation. Whereas the City of Lawrence was founded over a hundred and seventy years ago in the struggle against slavery, giving our community a local heritage and national significance. And whereas Lawrence residents, ever since, have drawn inspiration from this heritage to work for the values they believe in, making it vitally important to preserve the artifacts, documents, and the stories of local history. And whereas the Douglas County Historical Society opened the Watkins Museum of History in nineteen seventy-five, with the mission of preserving our community's diverse heritage and sharing it with everyone. And whereas this year, the Watkins Museum of History celebrates fifty years of service to the community. And whereas the museum staff and board members recognize that their success has depended on the many individuals and local organizations with whom they have partnered, making this anniversary year a cause for celebrating, not just the museum, but the community it serves. And whereas the anniversaries provide opportunities to look forward, as well as backward, and this fiftieth anniversary has inspired the Watkins Museum to search for new ways to increase public access, engage new audiences, and build collections that more fully represent the whole of our community. Now therefore, I'm Mike Dever, Mayor of the City of Lawrence, Kansas, along with my fellow commissioners, take the occasion of this anniversary to express our appreciation for the Watkins Museum of History and the Douglas County Historical Society for their work in preserving and sharing local history for the benefit of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are consented under one motion and approved by one motion. Members of the governing body may remove items for separate discussion if desired. Members of the public may remove items identified as quasi-judicial for separate discussions if desired. Members of the public will be limited to three minutes for comment. Is there an item from the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like remove? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Finkeldeis, seconded by Larson, all in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the regular agenda item, which is to consider conducting a public hearing for the vacation of an access and utility easement at three six zero one East Twenty-Fifth Street.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name is Stephen Smith. I am the Right-of-Way Program Administrator with the City of Lawrence's Municipal Services and Operations Department, and today I will be facilitating a public hearing for the vacation of an access and utility easement at three six oh one East Twenty-Fifth Street. This easement application was submitted by Trainer Incorporated on behalf of Douglas County for the construction of a development project currently going on at their property. I'm going to go ahead and pull up the exhibit real quick regarding this. All right, and let me know if I need to zoom in to any item on here. Going over this exhibit, the item in red is that proposed utility and access easement that is to be vacated as part of that application. In green is the proposed twenty-five-foot utility easement that will be put in place as a result of that vacation. As always, with this process, the City of Lawrence staff has reached out to all property owners within four hundred feet of this property, and we have not received any word back regarding any conflicts that this work may pose. We've also reached out to all private utility contractors and made sure that there are no private utilities in the way of this easement vacation. The only utility that was in conflict was a city-housed water main, public water main, and that water line has been relocated as part of its city public improvement project. So with that being said, city staff recommends to approve the ordinance for this vacation, and that's usually done in two steps. The first step is conducting a public hearing, and the second one is to approve, a vote to approve ordinance one zero one one eight for that vacation. And I am here and happy to answer any questions that you may have on this. I do know that the applicant informed me that they would be in attendance as well to answer any questions from Trainer Incorporated, as well as a City of Lawrence contact for that public improvement project, so.
Very good, thank you. Sherry, do I need to make a, like, a motion for, to open a public hearing in this instance, or is this technically what we're doing?
You don't need to make the motion.
Okay.
You can just say that you're opening a public hearing.
Very good, thank you.
After all, public comment.
Very good, thank you.
Say that it's closed.
Very good. Any questions from Commissioners?
No.
Good. I don't see any in the room. Sherry, any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Okay. Seems pretty straightforward. Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. Commissioners, anything to add, or is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Smith, you want to know, coming up here in front of us, good work. I would move to approve ordinance number one zero one one eight.
Second.
Okay.
We're adopted on first reading.
Excuse me? Yeah, go ahead and read that.
First reading. Adopted on first reading.
Adopted on first reading. Ordinance number one zero one one eight.
There's a motion to adopt by first reading by Finkeldeis, seconded by Sellers, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those, motion, those opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, the next item is to conduct a work session, and it's related to our safe and secure outcome conversation related to our public safety.
My name is Rich Lockhart, I'm your police chief here. Tonight, we are going to give you a little safe and secure update. I want to remind you that from our strategic plan, Lawrence is a community where all people feel safe and secure and have access to trusted public and community-based safety resources. A little outline of what we're going to do today. The first one will no doubt be the most popular part of this presentation, as we're having a formal introduction of Rosie, our therapy dog, and her handler, Officer Lindsay Bishop. Then I'll talk to you about the strengthening police and community partnerships report and program we did with the Department of Justice, and then I'll conclude with our new monthly performance reports. So I will turn it over to you, Officer Bishop, now.
Awesome. You got Rosie there.
I don't know if you guys can see her.
No, she's too well behaved, obviously.
I know, right, well, we're tired. But I'm Officer Bishop, I've been a police officer here in Lawrence for twelve years. I'm currently assigned as a school resource officer, and this is my third school year. Last school year, the chief's idea to come up with a therapy dog for the school was fantastic, so I pursued that endeavor. I got Rosie last spring. She was able to, she was just a regular... She was able to, she was just a regular dog. Instead of buying a pre-trained dog, I, she's just a regular dog that I took classes and trained. And we were able to pass the Canine Good Citizen Test and then a therapy dog certification test with Loving Paws, our local therapy dog organization. And then we've been serving in schools since September. So she comes with me almost every day to school. We also do community events through Loving Paws. We do a lot of drug court. We do wagon tail readers at the library. We were in the St. Patrick's Day parade, all of those kind of things. So people often say, you know, what does she do? Well, little kids ask me that, right? Like, they expect her to do a bunch of tricks or flip over or whatever. So that question has kind of been on my mind lately, and I started to think about it. And I really think what Rosie does is she creates moments. She creates connections. So what would otherwise be a quick passing at the police station before and after shift? Hey, hey, right? People will stop and they will engage with Rosie. And that means that they're engaging with me and they're sharing information or talking about things that are going on in their lives. And the same thing is happening at school. In a three-minute passing period, the most ever pets I counted was 30. She had 30 contacts in a three-minute period, and she is quite popular at West Middle School. They call her Officer Rosie. So this has been a huge addition, and I've noticed this big difference since having her. And I hope that we are, we actually are the first therapy dog for any City of Lawrence department. And I would hope that this would be something that could be pursued in other areas as well. I'm happy to take any questions, and I will stay after if you'd like a little up-close contact with my partner.
Besides Rosie's certification, did you have to get any certification?
I did not.
She's the only one that needs to know.
She's the only one, yes, yes. Or what not to do.
Interesting. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
One thing great about Rosie, too, I forgot to advance the slides, so we would get the picture there, but that's not advancing for me. Kurt, maybe you can help.
Look at it one more time.
Okay. There we go. Rosie came to us from a breeder, and they were done breeding Rosie, so she's five when she came here. And it was a very reduced fee. I think it was $50?
She's $50.
$50. So very low cost to get into this, and it's really been a great program for us. There's therapy dogs all over the country in different departments. In the last couple of years, when I went to IACP, the programs were getting really popular. And it's really for internal, for external relationships, but in the schools, it's the perfect location. And when I saw Loving Paws in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, I told Lindsay, I said, this is where we need to go train. And then this year, I didn't know she was going to be in the parade, but I was judging, and I saw him come walking by, and it was like one of those full circle moments. So really proud of Lindsay and the work she's done and the positive relationships that they're building, not only in the schools, but in the communities. We had our community budget folks come through yesterday, and one of the women that is in that community budget group has a kid at West. And so she spent more time talking about Rosie than budget. I don't know if she was supposed to do that, and I probably shouldn't say that in front of Craig because they had an assignment, but it was really, it was nice, and it's a great way to break the ice with folks. Onto the next item for you. The DOJ program that we did, this was a really, really great program, one I had never heard of. And so I have to thank, she's actually in the back, the woman who is everywhere, Doris Ricks, brought this to us, and it was really great. She introduced me to Kelly Hams Pearson, who works with the Department of Justice's Community Relations Service. And they do these seminars all over the country. What they do is they try and commit, these are community leader-driven and community police relations-focused, that identify issues and problem-solving process, and they call it Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships, SPCP. The Community Resolution Service provides facilitation to volunteer facilitators, the issues identification and problem-solving methodology. And all of the information contained in this report, they point out, was recorded word for word from the notes that was, were created during the process. And so we invited them to come here and do this. There was a lot of planning that went into it ahead of time. This is not a police thing, though. This is a police and community thing, and I think that's a really important distinction to make, in that we were involved in planning, but there was also a very large contingent of people from our community that were involved before the event even started to get it planned. And Doris was one of those folks that helped with that. The other thing to keep in mind, too, it's a voluntary program. So the nice thing about this is there wasn't a lot of pressure. There wasn't a bad event that happened. There wasn't something negative that happened to bring in the DOJ and the Community Relations Service. You see a lot of communities in the news where the police have done something inappropriate, and the DOJ comes in and it's an adversarial process. This was not that. This was one where we said, come in, help us figure this out. And we had about 80, 83 people is what the report says, show up on a Saturday morning at Lawrence High School on two different Saturday mornings to talk about this. The facilitators were all community leaders. They volunteered. They were trained by Kelly and her staff, and they developed these groups and led the discussions in these groups that generated what we had. So there's a, the schedule in there of what we did. It was Saturday, July 27th, and Saturday, August 23rd. So the first thing we did is we divided the groups, we didn't, they divided the groups into six different groups. One was the community slash advocacy organizations, public safety and law enforcement, faith and neighborhood groups, victim advocates and concerned citizens and retirees, educational leaders, and civic and local government officials. The two questions they talked about first was what are current successes related to police community partnerships and trust? What is working and why? And two, what is a positive interaction that you've had with law enforcement? So this first part got everybody kind of discussing and helped gel the groups together. So some of the things that came out from the different groups, and I won't go through every single one, but the community advocacy organizations talked about how police leadership was open and willing to address issues. Talked about the NAACP and other affinity groups that are working with law enforcement. Great leaders of color in the community working effectively with police. Chief Lockhart is open and willing to listen, so I'm going to probably have to get some of those in, just so I can get that in there. The organization Justice Matters is active. From the public safety and law enforcement side, success in policing community trust. Downtown Patrol, safety restored, comfortable. This was another common theme. SRO program prevents problems from escalating. Summer programs are great. From the faith organizations and neighborhood groups, easy to go to the park and feel safe and not over surveilled. You know where you are, frame of reference. An inclusive group of LPD employees was a breath of fresh air. From the victim advocates and concerned citizens and retirees, they noted that LPD expresses compassion about personal issues. They give warnings during traffic stops and exercise discretion. Another one here, many positive SRO interactions. From the educational and civic leaders, they appreciated being involved and being able to share ideas. Children are a focus and celebrated at school. That was the SRO presence. Lawrence is a town full of friendly neighbors. Governmental entities are involved in a lot of community issues. From our local government and elected officials, they talked about they put themselves between humanity and the profession, demonstrating compassion. The expectations officers are high, which add a load to their job. And then the SRO program is a plus. So almost every group mentioned SROs. And if you remember, just five years ago, a lot of communities were taking SROs out of schools. And here in Lawrence, Dr. Lewis was a such big, strong supporter of our SRO program, and he fought to keep them in the schools. And one of the reasons he did that, I believe, is that our SRO program is different. It's different than SRO programs in other communities, and Officer Bishop is here as a testament to that. And so we have a really good program. The community and all of the groups recognize that. Almost every group mentioned that, and I think that's really important to note. The second thing that they, we talked about is what are the current barriers to police community partnerships and trust? What is not working and why? And then what barriers exist between law enforcement and the community that need to be addressed? What do you feel is the state of the current relationship between the police and the community? And what issues exist that impact community and police relations? So again, we went back into the same groups and pulled out some of those questions. And again, I won't read all of them, but I'll just hit some of the highlights. So from the community advocacy organizations, there was a lack of trust in law enforcement and the justice system. The public safety and law enforcement mentioned mental health team, the need for one. A mental health crisis, homeless issues aren't consistently being met. The police department's ability to respond and convey transparency. Faith organizations, neighborhood groups, a general negative perception of police officers, even when there has not been a personal negative interaction, and they believe those were driven by social media. This one was really interesting to me as well, because they recognized that police are being asked to do things that are beyond the traditional scope of police responsibilities, like dealing with mental health, homeless, and family crisis. Number four, the group four, the victim advocate, concerned citizens, and retirees, talked about a sense of us versus them. So it's like the police are, this create this us versus them dynamic with our community. A lack of cultural teaching, racial disparities and cultural differences amongst the police and the community. Educational and civic leaders talked about houselessness. What is the behavior? What is the response? The number of police personnel were stretched thin. The consistency of messages and how it's delivered and how it can hamper how officers respond. The local government officials and elected officials talked about the burden of mental health and family interaction issues, the impact of social media, and the resulting perception of the police and law enforcement, even without an interaction. They talked, this was a really interesting thing, I thought, too. They talked about bulletproof vests and uniforms can create psychological barriers or sense of threat. And so, you know, when we look at that, we, and we'll talk about that a little bit more, but, you know, the uniform identifies who the police officer is, so we need to understand that a little bit better. So following the issues identification phases of the process, each small group was asked to select two community leaders to participate on the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Council, along with two community leaders to act as alternates. The small groups will reconvene into the large general session group, and each group, represented by the newly selected SPCP council members, gave a short presentation on their identified strengths and issues of concern. So this is one of those situations where each person was given five dots, so you go place the dots on the board. And so these were the top six areas that came out of that discussion. Number one was the them versus us, us. Both community and LPD can demonstrate this attitude. That was the number one thing, received 46 votes. Number two, the need for transparency and accountability and protocols and policy that received 35 votes. Number three, effectively addressing mental health calls and how to deal with emotionally dysregulated populations, 31 votes. Cultural inclusivity and understanding can be lacking, including gender and age, 28 votes. Police's authority figures, the bulletproof vest, the uniforms, and symbols that trigger, that was 24 votes. And this one really surprised me the most, and I still remember the person that brought it up, but the community sending the police mixed messages. So one of the things that this person talked about in their group was, you know, we see homeless people hanging out at the library, and we call the police, and we want them to come and do something about it, but then we complain when they come and do something about it. And so there is this sense that there are mixed messages that we send, and so probably working to some greater understanding will be important as we talk about strengthening our police and community partnerships. So then the following session, we started working on developing solutions for these ideas. They used a five-step problem-solving method. And one, identify the problem. Two, brainstorm possible solutions. Three, pick the best possible solution. Four, develop a plan of action and implement the solution. And five, follow up on the success of the implementation. So facilitators, again, the same folks that facilitated the week before, use guiding questions developed by the planning group to facilitate the dialogue. One was, the first question was, what can the police and community do together to address these barriers and what needs to change? How can we strengthen police and community partnerships? How can we improve communication between the community and the police department? And how can we improve trust between the community and the police department? So in the them versus us section, we talked about additional education, educational and training and engagement, trying to get out in our community more. You all have heard me talk about this before, where if I stop somebody on a traffic stop, that interaction is very stressful for both the officer and the person who's being stopped. But if we see Rosie on the street and talk to her, that's not stressful. That's something that we can have a much more meaningful discussion. And so we do community engagement to try and facilitate those opportunities. Our SROs are a perfect example of that. The number one call for an SRO in our schools is the request to speak to an officer. That's a student typically wanting to talk to an officer. And so those are opportunities where that them versus us is eroded away, because they're seeing officers in a non-law enforcement setting, even though they're still law enforcement. The next one is policies and partnerships, or policies and procedures written in partnership, oh, wrong one. Policies and procedures written in partnership with or with input from the community. Again, that helps people understand what we do in a much more meaningful way. And then community and law enforcement review annual training together, same lines of the policies and procedures. The next solution, or the next issue that we talked about was the need for transparency and accountability. One of the things that was identified as a solution was to put a community step into policy changes or formally include the community in the process. Also, when sharing information, respect victims' desire for privacy and transparency. And then police should have regular information sections with nonprofit and advocacy organizations in Lawrence. Effectively address mental health concerns and calls. One of the things we want to talk about is, or solution, a solution that came up with was effective and comprehensive partnering with agencies. One of the things that we have, and you'll see this later in our alternative response to calls, we had the time with the covered Kennedy School folks to look at alternatives, 911 calls for service. Probably one of the biggest ones we've seen success with now is our mental health response teams from Burton Ash. And they're handling a lot of calls that officers would have handled in the past, and they're really doing them a lot better because they're trained clinicians in social work. The other thing they talked about was just giving each other grace, which is really, I mean, it's a basic human thing, but it's hard to do with people who are in positions of authority. And so, you know, you guys have heard me talk about mess up, fess up, and move on. When we make mistakes, we're going to say we made mistakes, and we're going to fix what caused that mistake to happen, and then we're going to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Establish an agreed-upon code of ethics, and that's for the community and for the police, and that comes back to expectations. Additional training for sworn and support staff, making sure that our people who are out there dealing with the public have as much training as they can in dealing with the public. The next one, police's authority figures, symbols that can trigger, providing education to the community as to why the police should wear uniforms. So one of the things that we talk about when we train our new police officers is that your very presence conveys a meaning. So the way you present yourself to a community member can convey a positive or a negative meaning, but the uniform itself is something that you need to make sure that you respect it. And when we're interviewing candidates, we look at them, and for me, I want to envision, do I see this person wearing this uniform and representing our community the way they should be? That's part of the reason why we train our own people here and we don't send them to Hutchinson, because we want them to be trained to be police officers the Lawrence way, and it's different than it is anywhere else in the state. And we're proud of that, because we feel like we do it better than anyone else does. Better association and engagement with the community is needed. This could include recreational, volunteering, community service, being aware of our audience. So we look for these opportunities. I have a lot of officers who serve on nonprofit boards around town. I have officers who go out and engage in the parades. You'll see them at the Pride Parade coming up. We're starting to do a program with the Boys and Girls Club this summer that you'll hear more about coming up. So those kinds of opportunities, again, are creating situations where officers are interacting with our community in a way that isn't an enforcement action. It's not a call for service. It's not a stressful thing, and they can see us as just regular people in our community. Hold culturally relevant programs, events, and celebrations, or be part of those. And that's one of the things that we try to do, is be part of those celebrations that we have in town. Follow up and feedback concerning a crime. We do a lot of that on our social, but we still need to talk to our community about, how can we do this better and get some input from them? Create meaningful and genuine relations with the community. And again, this comes back to being out there more, and it's something that we used to do really well, probably before the pandemic. We got away from it for those couple of years afterwards, and we're now just starting to get back into it. If you ask our downtown business owners who their foot patrol officers are, they know who those two officers are. They see them regularly, and they build relationships with them that are meaningful. Cultural inclusivity and understanding can be lacking. Training for desired behavior and incentives for positive interactions. Again, we, it just comes back to creating those opportunities for officers to be out there and meeting with the different members of our community. The police department needs to be more transparent regarding statistics on policing, its own demographics, and efforts to reflect the community. We'll get to that after this part. That's part of what we're trying to do, is share more, what's going on in your community. And one of the things that Craig and I talk about quite a bit is, you know, crime in Lawrence is very manageable. It's mostly down, but the fear of crime is up, especially in certain parts of town. And so we can go to them with statistics all the time and say, but, but your community's safe. And their response is, but I don't feel safe. So how do we make them feel safe? And that's where these communications, these conversations happen, and we come up with strategies to do that. Aligning the community standards with the police departments, making sure that those two mesh. Be conscious and thoughtful, logical in police officers' assignments, the right person and the right job. SROs are a great example of that. Not every police officer can be an SRO. Doesn't mean they're a bad police officer, but not everybody can deal with kids every day. And so it's important to make sure we put the right person in there. The next thing about the community sending the police the mixed messages, and this is something that we'll all have to work on. They talked about a systemic change in approach, so well-communicated policies and procedures, unified messaging, and a community response group needed, so we're not making decisions in a vacuum. And that's where part of this Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Council comes from, is we now have a group of people where we can go to them to help implement some of these solutions, but also if we have something significant that happens, they can be a resource for us to communicate with the various segments of our community. Police need to show up in non-enforcement roles, things like our teen academy. They talked about an academy for adults. We used to have a citizens academy here. The sheriff's office does one every year, and we haven't gotten back to doing one since the pandemic. But making police accessible in recruitment. So, you know, one of our officers coaches basketball at Lawrence High School. He's an assistant coach. So we're making relationships with kids there in a non-law enforcement way, but they know that this is a police officer, and so it helps them see him in a different way. Let's see, here is the council. So what the council will do, they're going to convene and work through an implementation plan. And so what Kelly Hams Pearson, who's with the Community Resolution Service, she'll come back down and facilitate this session for us. And so what we've got is a worksheet that she'll give us, and the worksheet has the actions, so the things that we just went through. It has the owners who are responsible for the action, what resources are needed for that action, the status of it, so most of these will be just beginning, and then a completion date. And so each one of those things that we just went through will be on that action plan. And then the things that she's going to help us clarify, because some of these may not be fully understood, but are the actions specific and measurable? Do the actions have deadlines? Who is responsible for each action? What are the barriers to completing each action, and how can the council overcome these barriers? Is there resistance from certain groups or statutory change needed before an action can be implemented? Do we have enough person power? Can we recruit more volunteers? Do we have enough time to carry out the actions? And are these action steps things people can get excited about? That's the other part of this, is are we going to generate some energy, or is it going to be just another drain where people are not wanting to give up their Saturday morning to come and do these things? Does the action require money or other resources? And if so, are there actions for obtaining the funding or other resources? What resources does the council possess? Not this council, the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships Council. Does the action require the approval of city officials or other leaders? If so, are there actions for obtaining the needed approval? So what we're hoping to do is get this group back together and start working on that implementation plan, and we will use the city manager's report to report progress to you all on that. And once we get started, we'll have the group discuss how often we want to update the commission on what we're doing through that means. One thing I see Doris everywhere I go, so Doris always reminds me that we need to get this done. So the community members like that are real important for us to work through. Be happy to answer any questions about that before I move on to the next thing.
Who's going to set the timeframe? I wasn't quite sure about.
We're going to look for next month, getting the group back together.
Okay.
And have that first meeting, and then we'll develop timelines for each one of the action items that we're going to look at.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. The next thing I have for you all is, the first of this year, we started doing monthly performance reports. And so in your packet, you have January, February, and March. One of the things that stuck in my mind is, and I don't know if Henry Ford actually said it, but, and it's something along the lines of whatever we measure is what counts. And so usually, police departments are measuring crime, and we focus on how we can reduce and prevent crime. So it's really important from that standpoint to look at things like that. But there are other things that are also very important when we look at, how do we measure police performance? So one of the largest things that we do is we answer calls for service in our community. Someone calls 911, we show up. So that's the first thing that we're measuring here is, is how are our calls for service doing? So in January, we had 6,600 calls for service. In February, we had 6,200, and so you can see how those are all the way through there. 7,400 in March. Calls always go up as we get towards summertime. But I didn't want to just look at calls, so I wanted to look at how many of our calls were handled in alternative matters. So we've got, we have community service technicians who go out and they handle just our report calls. These are not sworn members, and so I wanted to measure how their workload was. So in January, for example, we measured 4% of those were handled by the community service technicians. But I mentioned earlier our mental health response teams. And so if you look on the second page, you can see, and it's actually one of our key performance indicators, SAS number five, are the number of calls handled by service alternatives to traditional public safety response. So we've got our community service technicians, we've got our mental health response teams, that's MRT, and then the mental health team, which is an officer who handles follow-up and mental health calls. So we're measuring that every month, and you'll start to see the mental, the mental health response team is the one I wanted to kind of call out. They've gone up, they were 78 in January, and actually, they've actually gone up. I think that number's wrong, but, so for March, no, that's right. They handled 161 calls in March, so 316 calls year-to-date. When they first started, this was more than a year ago, they weren't, they were only handling about maybe 10, 12 calls a month. They have now been switched up, and this happened through our Harvard Kennedy School experiment, to where they're dispatched by emergency communications. So previous to that, they were dispatched through the 988 system, and so they weren't getting a lot of calls. But as you can see, the utilization is going up. The other thing is now they're on our radio system, so the officers know when they're out there, and so they can call for them on the radio, or they can also just go by and make sure that everything's going okay with their calls. So that's been a really, really great resource for us. But then our community service technicians, they're handling a lot of calls. They handled 708 calls for the first three months of the year. So again, that's something that we're measuring as part of our key performance indicators. The other thing I wanted to point out is, we started tracking our top five calls for service locations. And so for the first three months of the year, they've been, the number one and two have been very consistent, but there was one last month that kind of stuck out. And so what this is doing for us is it's allowing us to go in and say, what's going on here? Last month, one of our top five calls for service location wasn't in January, and it's not in March, but it was a single residence where we had a woman who was having mental health issues. And so she was having enough calls that she was, I think it was third or fourth on our February report. So what we were able to do is to have our mental health resources go out there and visit with her, and these weren't police calls. They were just somebody, she, sometimes she just needed somebody to talk to. Sometimes they were things that she thought were out there that weren't out there, so she was hallucinating. And so only because we were tracking calls, we were able to know that this was consistent. Because these calls would come, it was 25 calls. It wasn't a lot of calls, but again, it was enough to be in our top five. And because they happened on all different shifts and all different days of the weeks of the week, no one would put that together. So this is allowing us to look at things in a different way. The top calls for service location got everyone looking at what's going on out there, and who are the people that are generating those calls? And so we have a group of officers that are out there. It's an apartment complex at 3250 Michigan, and there's a lot of vulnerable people living out there. There's a very small number of people that are creating the calls. It's mostly narcotics activity, disturbances, and we've run into a lot of good people out there who just want to live peacefully, but these other folks are keeping them from doing that. So now we're able to pay some extra attention out there to make sure we can problem solve. We've been working with our housing authority, with apartment management, and this is a true community solution for what's going on out there. And so that is, this information is now being used in a way that it wasn't being used prior to January when we started tabulating it up. We're also looking at our response times. This is also one of our new KPIs. We're using our comparisons here to our benchmark cities. So we're part of a group that collects different data points for other police departments throughout the country. And so for us, our priority one calls, those are our highest priority emergency calls. Our response time for March was 4 minutes, 49 seconds. It's a little bit higher than our benchmark, which was 4 minutes and 22 seconds. We've been on priority one calls higher than we wanted to be for all three months, but if you look at our priority two calls and our priority three calls, we're getting to those faster than our benchmark cities are. The next thing that we wanted to look at was the percentage of investigations resolved with an arrest, notice to appear, or referred to a prosecutor for charging. This sounds real similar to a clearance rate, but this is not an exact clearance rate. So I just want to point that out to you all if you're familiar with clearance rates. Clearance rates can only be done if you have an arrest, a notice to appear, or a prosecutor makes a decision on it. Well, in our case, the prosecutors don't always make decisions on those cases very quickly. But whether they charge it or don't charge it, it still counts as a clearance when you have an identified suspect. So for us, what we're saying is, we've identified a suspect, we've sent it to the prosecutor, we're calling that case resolved because our work is done. The prosecutor, it's up to the prosecutor now to make a decision on it. So this is, again, a way to measure our work. So we have a resolution right here for each one of those cases, so we'll be able to watch that and see how that is taking place. There are some cases that don't have a resolution, and that's the point of the footnote. So if somebody doesn't want to assist in the prosecution, which happens sometimes with sexual assaults, those are not necessarily investigated. If we have a death investigation that turns into a suicide or something like that, it will not count as a resolution because it's not a crime technically. Missing persons are the same way. They're not crimes, but they still count as a report, they count as a case, and have investigative time put into them, but it won't show up in the case resolution. The other one, next page, is a Safe and Secure KPI number two, our NiBROS Group A Crimes. So this we transferred over. Our old KPI said UCR crime. NiBROS is a national incident-based reporting system, so most departments have transitioned to this from the Uniform Crime Reporting System, which was UCR. And so you can see now our person, property, and society crimes as we go through the year. What we're using here is a per 1,000 measurement, so you can see if that goes up or down. Talked already about our calls handled by service alternatives. This next one is another one that I'll share a real enlightening thing with you on this. It's a new KPI for us, Safe and Secure 9, Domestic Violence and Victim Witness Assistance. So we wanted to measure the percentage of outreach provided by systems-based advocacy to sexual and domestic violence per reported incident. So for this month, we did really well. We had 106%, which means that we referred the victim to more resources. So one victim went to more than one resource. These are our partners that we deal with, domestic violence and victim witness assistance. The Willow is our biggest one, but you can see all of the other ones there. On the next page, we are measuring, because domestic violence is something that's very important for us to measure, it's important work, and so we measure our calls. We've got a full-time officer and a victim advocate that deals with that. But the lethality assessment is where we ask the victim of a domestic violence incident a series of questions. The questions are designed to determine how lethal is it for that person to stay in that situation? Or in plain language, is this person going to be seriously injured or killed if they stay in this situation? So if you have a high risk, that means that we really need to get some intervention for that person through a victim advocate, or get a PFA, or get a suspect charged and in custody. So 28% of the ones we had were high-risk. Low-risk were 36%. But the next one was one that we found an opportunity here. So we want to have 100% of these lethality assessments completed by the officers that are responding on these calls. We just started it last year, so it's still a new program for us, but we found that there was 36% weren't completed by the officer. So now we've got an opportunity to go do some training. And before January, we weren't even looking at this, so we didn't know it was there. So now we're collecting this monthly, we're hoping to see that number go down, and so we're going to be doing some additional training with our officers to make sure they know. We're also going to make sure that we accurately captured that, because we have a lot of data that comes from different sources, and so we want to make sure we're getting accurate stuff there. The next thing that we want to look at is our staffing, and this is what's real illuminating for me, especially when people ask me about, how are you doing staffing-wise? We talked in the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships about officers being spread thin. So for March of this year, we were, we had 143 officers out of our 152 authorized, so we were down nine positions. We had nine vacancies. The effective sworn staff, though, the amount of people that I actually had available to me was even lower. We had 128 out of 152. So 84% is all we had available to us for work. And if you look down at the next graphic below, it talks about where those folks are. So one, we had in the academy. We had nine in field training, so remember the 19 weeks of field training, they don't count as a person because their training officer and them are operating as a one-person unit. We had one on military leave. We had three on FMLA or modified duties, so somebody was either hurt, or they were off attending to something. One was on parental leave. So when you start looking at that, you can start to see that, you know, being 16% down has a significant impact on what we can do as far as delivering service. Our professional staff, we were not in as bad a shape there. We were only down one there and then two open positions, so 31 out of 33 there. And then the last thing we're looking at is some of our overtime and training hours, and also our staffing and investigations, which is not as mission-critical as it is in patrol. So that is our monthly performance reports for you. What we're going to do, the plan is to, these are all due to me by the first Tuesday of the month, and then at that last meeting of the month, you all receive these in the city manager report on a monthly basis. So we're going to check off a box from the Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships program with sharing performance statistics before we even meet. So that'll be a good thing with regard to that. So happy to answer, are there any questions that you all have?
I just have one to start. If anyone else wants one, please chime in. So you talked about the inability to access some of this information, for example, failure to fill out one of the domestic violence forms, for example.
Yeah.
Potential. How did you realize that you weren't collecting that, or how is it that we weren't able to parse that information previously? And what made, what tools gave you the ability to make you more informed?
So it's a, it's a form that they fill out and becomes part of the case file. So somebody looking at it would know that it hadn't gotten filled out, so our victim advocate would know that, but no one else knew that beyond that group. So because we prioritized it, and we started counting it, now more people know that it's not getting done. Myself, the deputy chiefs, the majors, the lieutenants. So now we can go back and say, y'all need to fill this thing out. Whereas before, the sergeant should have been doing that, checking on it, but they weren't. And so I think it gets back to, if it's important and you count it, it'll get done. And that's, that's what, what this is doing for us.
So it's siloed, basically, in their, in that specific department or area.
Yeah, in a sense.
And then other people weren't aware of it, but now it's out there. So how is it becoming out there in the open? Have you made these electronic forms? Are they somehow built into a database now? How is it becoming more available to you as a leader and to others who want to oversee and look into this information?
The monthly performance reports, they're actually, unfortunately, most of them are, they're done by hand, a lot of them. But what we do, once they're completed, we're sending them out to everybody electronically. So now everybody has this information, and that's where, like, the top five calls for service came in, because now patrol, it's like, I knew we were spending a lot of time out there, but I didn't know it was that bad. So now they're creating strategies to develop and handle those extra calls at those locations so that we can address those. So, you know, a lot of times people talk about, you know, we're information-rich and data-poor. And I think that's the case with a lot of stuff. We collect a lot of stuff, but we don't always dive into it and analyze it in a way that's meaningful. So we started this, this year, and so we're, you know, we're taking little pieces of the pie and seeing what they are. One of the things we looked at when we started this was our accidents. And what we found is, we don't have a lot of high-crash locations in Lawrence. So the most number of crashes we had at any one intersection was three. Well, that's not a trend. That's not a, something that you can really analyze and problem-solve. That's a good thing, because we don't have a lot of crashes. I don't know why. That's something that Melissa and I are going to visit with about, I suspect that it's traffic engineering. Because one of the things that I've learned in 35 years is that if you properly engineer a street and an intersection, you can actually make it safer than you can with a police officer standing there writing tickets. And, you know, so I suspect that's what's happening here, but it's going to need some more diving into before we get that answer. But that was something we came up with in January, and we're not doing accidents anymore because there's not really a trend there that we need to monitor.
Thank you.
One question on the, you reported in the NiBROS Group A crimes.
Yes.
Is there a benchmark of some sort for comparable?
Yeah, we have, we can do that with benchmark cities, and so that's what we're trying to do right now, is come up with that one. So for all of our KPIs, we have like a goal that we're wanting to attain. So for all of our KPIs, we have like a goal that we're wanting to attain. We haven't developed that one yet, this is one of our newer ones. But I think that's what we're going to do, is use benchmark to compare ourselves. At least give us a baseline, something to look at.
Yeah, I think, I think as you report these out, if we had one, it'd be a good one to, to benchmark there to you. Point earlier about, I think the statistics show we're safer than people feel.
Right.
And, and I guess on that question, is that a, an ongoing conversation with our communications folks on how to address that?
Yeah, and actually, we're doing some work with KU School of Journalism, and we're creating some videos that we're going to be able to share with our community, those should be coming up pretty soon. The other thing we're doing is with our, our quarterly insert that we're doing with the Lawrence Journal World, creating those opportunities as well. So we've got our second edition coming up the end of this month, and we're using that to inform about the work that we do, and we're hoping that that will help with some of that messaging as well. So we've got four pages of editorial content, and, you know, it's, it's stuff that we write, that we produce, and goes in, and goes out to our entire community. It's available electronically, so whether you get the paper or not, you're going to get to see it in some fashion. And then we get the paper copies that I gave to y'all last time it was out. So we can, when we go to community events, we distribute those. It's mostly people my age and older that are reading the actual paper, paper. There's a few of the younger folks that do still, so that's why we get the PDF electronically to be able to distribute that way.
This is great information, thank you very much for putting this together.
Any other questions? Okay. I'll become it.
Did you guys hear the spin? Parks are safe unless there's homeless people there. Had a shirt made specifically for this agenda item. Chief, this is for you. Because that's how a lot of people feel about you and some of your police officers. What he didn't address with you guys, he's going to talk about all the information that you're going to get, all this data. Doesn't address the trust on the street, doesn't address the fact that none of his cops will or will defend Garrett Welch. Speaking of Garrett Welch, I had another video sent to me today. Guy's a real piece of shit, guys. But they don't want to talk about those things. He's going to talk about only the things he wants to. That's why I say fuck you this much. Because he doesn't want to come in here and address the real problems that we have on the street, the real biased policing problems. Certain people will get tickets for certain things, other people won't. Speaking of that, you guys remember the homeless jaywalking ticket? Do we remember what happened with that? I remember exactly what happened with that. You, Ms. Larson, thought that he reported a complaint, that he didn't report. He lied to you. Your chief of police lied to you. Then he got caught lying in an open meeting.
We did receive an appeal of the complaint.
Y'all remember this?
Mr. Robbie, and per the ordinance, and we've reviewed an appeal here before in executive session.
It wasn't an appeal.
What, what was the executive session for, that was not an appeal?
No, that was a complaint, to give you guys an example of what a complaint file looks like, it wasn't an actual appeal. That was a former employee, when you reviewed it, he had retired. The intention was to give you guys an idea of what the complaint file looks like, what the process looks like.
It was presented to us as an item to review, and it took a substantial amount of our time.
And we were told it was an actual bias complaint.
Oh, okay. Just, yeah, that's you. That's you, Larson.
Michael referred to, and both of those, they...
Telling me that I was wrong.
Executive session to...
Because your chief lied to you. You got a deputy chief sitting in the room right now that turns off his body cam to coach witnesses. Y'all ain't seen it yet, you'll eventually see it. You got another deputy chief charged with battery in another county? That's your police department, guys. And you got your Lawrence Journal World over here that will write from the narrative that the police write. But when Myron Grady was arrested, boy, that reporting was just a little short on that affidavit narrative, wasn't it? You're a fucking liar, chief.
Time, thank you, sir. Any other public comment? How about online, Jerry?
Jeffrey Hepler.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Jeffrey Hepler, 66044. I appreciate the presentation, appreciate the numbers. These are not the numbers that I would like to see. I need more details. Thank you.
I appreciate this report coming in from Chief Lockhart, and some of the ideas spoken. And then follow-up to what Mayor Dever was going on about, as well as Vice Mayor Finkeldie, I'd like to see included in that report that comes in monthly, the number of incident reports that are created during the month. Since our town has a policy that allows the police to beat you below your head with their hands and their fists and their elbows and their knees, et cetera, such that those kinds of strikes don't go in a use-of-force report, rather, they are buried in an incident report. So it would be very interesting to know how many incident reports there are each month. That's just off the top of my head in thinking about the value of information that could come in this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Samuel Carter.
Good evening, Commissioners. It's my name, Samuel Carter, and I wanted to, I guess, talk again about Chapter 22, Section 202, B20 of the Historic Conservation Code. And again, this is the code that requires...
Samuel, all right, this is, excuse me, can I interrupt you for a second? These comments need to be related to the Works Sessam item, which is for the public safety.
I'm so sorry, I thought this was a public comment. All right, I'll drop off.
That's okay, that's okay, no, no problem.
Excited.
That's all the public comment.
Okay, very good, thank you very much. Commissioners, do you have anything to add or questions to ask of the chief before we move on on the items?
Just a couple things, I'd, I'd like to say, you know, thanks for the, the data, and I think the data is going to be helpful, and agree that the more you measure it, the more you, you follow it. I do think it'd be helpful to have that comparison I mentioned. You know, I do think, you know, continuing to think about, you know, our communication from the police department, you know, obviously Twitter and Facebook sometimes have really funny stuff, and then they're also reporting things. But I was noticing after the incident on Saturday night where there was a shooting downtown, I mean, there was, you know, a lot of follow-up comments, oh, that, that happens every weekend, you know, it seems like, you know, people getting shot every weekend downtown. And, you know, we know that's not true, there's not shots fired every weekend, but how do we, I'm not saying you have to respond to those sorts of things, but how, as part of the, the reporting of it, we certainly need to report it, and we certainly need to have it out there, but, you know, is there a way to put it in some sort of context or to address some of those questions you know that are coming? And, and then I think, you know, again, as you were talking with the journalism and others about, you know, more positive stories, in particular, as you have here, the, the Mobile Response Team is an example of their increased calls, I know we've seen that in a few places. A better understanding of what those calls are, what kind of issues they're dealing with, I think would be useful. And, you know, I know there was a recent presentation at the county about that from some of the Mobile Response Team in Butnash, I mean, just getting some of those stories out. And then, as, as you and I both serve on the CJCC, trying to figure out, I know the CJCC is working on their public relations side of that, and how we can help get that information out. I know that group is working on it between the sheriff, the DA, the police, the county, the city, how we can continue to work together to get some of those positive messages out about the things we are doing, while obviously knowing we have lots of things to work on too, but, so I just encourage us to keep working on that. But also, thanks, Doris, for all your work, and the rest of the, the folks working on this project, and look forward to getting more solutions.
Yeah, just to quickly add to the chief's presentation, you know, I did appreciate the data points on some of those social calls, you know, that's something that we talked about since you've joined, that predated you with some of the City Gate information that came out, those recommendations on what can we do to mitigate some of those social calls. So I see what's reported here, that, that is a through line, and we've made, we've made advancements in that, in having those non-sworn officers to, to help to do cases and things of that nature. So I see where we're taking, you know, those recommendations and putting them in policy and practice, which, again, those are the things that often happen, that they're not splashy. And, you know, I think we, we've talked about messaging and communications, and how do we tell our story? And I think that's, I think that's what should be centralized, all of this is just, how do we tell our story? Because oftentimes, I think sometimes even the best intentions in how to get something out, you know, it goes back to the point that was made in the DOJ about the mixed messaging. And I know we talked about that, I, you know, had the opportunity to attend the second week, I wasn't available to attend the first week. And I think what I took from that experience, because it was, well, it was diversely represented, diverse in age and thought and culture and ethnicity, and departments and different areas within our community. And where those topics or issues that bubbled up, that was true consensus from the group. You had, you had police and fire and pastors and citizens saying, yes, we need to give each other grace. And so oftentimes, the conversations that don't happen here in this room, that don't happen on social media, that happen every day, was happening at that event. And we didn't focus on the, the outliers or the, the hyperbole that sometimes we get inundated with, and that voices, voices of the community were not given the opportunity, they had a space to be able to share that. And, you know, and I appreciate the work that the NAACP and the DOJ and chief, with your team, doing that. And, you know, even though, you know, we had some folks that barked a bit, we managed, the facilitators managed to stay on topic and stay on task, and reminded us that this was not, that you were a partner in this work, that this wasn't something that was led by you, this was community-led, that was a partnership with a city entity. So at the very essence of that, that is co-governance, that's that co-relationship, that's what we're talking about. So to see that and to be a part of that, I appreciated that. And so I think we're getting there with that whole messaging piece, I think I shared this with Craig a couple of weeks ago, that I had a chance on social media, seeing the video that was done about the SRO officers. And, you know, just watching it, it, I got emotional, you know, because I think, to your point, that you were saying that, you know, oftentimes, there is a little bit of an overlay of this idea that SROs are bad. And I think a lot of that happens in our community, where we see other neighboring communities, and we project that on us, good, bad, and indifferent. And so the video, you know, gave an opportunity for people to see that, you know, this is not, you know, some police officer roughing up and harassing students, that they are partners, they are showing them that they are here to, to protect him, to be a confidant, to be someone that they could share with. And so as we continue to build that out with, with our support animals, and, you know, what we continue to do with our Mobile Response Teams, that will hopefully show us how we can shift, to your point of not having law enforcement do things that law enforcement shouldn't be doing, because again, crisis response, I don't want law enforcement doing it. I think they should be there as, you know, support, but they should not be the first one, same with, with homelessness and houselessness. So, you know, I think that's where that communication piece will come in, because we are a community trying to do as much as we can with very limited social services. And, you know, it's, it's going to be a trial and error, so, you know, we're not going to get it right all the time, but I'm seeing where at least there's that intentionality from your office to highlight these things that we're seeing that we know we need to work on, but also creating opportunities for us to truly build into that community collaborative piece without being so focused on the outliers and the hyperbole that we often see. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to add one, with Commissioner Sellers' talking, it brought up a couple things in my mind, I want to make sure we point out, really appreciate you focusing on the ways that we can be creative in helping people, that's what it's all about. And I want to see that same sense of urgency directed to other parts of our law enforcement, and specifically, some of the complaints about, you know, lack of information or data or, you know, the fact that we may not have known something we should have known, maybe we should be seeking that information and making it more visible in public so that everyone feels more comfortable with the way we're managing our department, because ultimately, your safety is in our hands, so we want to, we want to feel safe. And so accountability is really important, and, you know, I believe deeply in the training, but I also understand that, once you train somebody, you got to have good leaders and great partners in the government, and hopefully, we're going to be good partners for you, but we need those officers on our street, and we need them trained so that they respect everyone equally, and that we have people that are progressive in their thinking, but also strict in their accounting of, of what we want here. So for me, I believe that your, your movement with the outreach that was done last, last summer-ish, for me, was a great move in the right direction, but I really wanted to see the results, and it feels like you've, you've, you've done those things, that you've put them into place, and that really is inspiring. But again, I want that transparency to be at the highest level, because you'll see what is going to come forward with this information we'll be sharing. You're going to have a place to put it every month, and if we can find more ways to share information, find another piece of data, I'd like to share that with the community. So that's, that's what I want to add to this, so thank you. Anything else from you? No. Okay. All right, and thanks for, Rosie, for showing up. Overtime, did we have to pay her overtime? Is there a biscuit involved? Okay, okay. Well, thanks for coming, we appreciate you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to the commission items. Anybody have anything to bring up?
I just wanted to say two things. One, might be interesting to have a Mobile Response Team update at some point later in the year, just to hear Mobile Response Team update on one of these. Two, the, just want to thank, I'm not sure who all worked on it, because there was not a name next to it, but the resolution, D9A, as we head to DC, it's good to have that. Commissioner Sellers, I think you helped on that.
I may have.
I appreciate your work on that, and good to have that as we, as we move forward, so appreciate that.
Take one for the team.
Okay, anything else on the, how about on the agenda?
Real quick on commission items, just wanted to, I, I feel like I've become a robot about this time, I keep promoting, hey, we only meet with the county once a year, and so if, just to get us thinking about, do we need to get something on the calendar sooner rather than later, if that's something we want to do? And I know usually, Mayor, that is a, a charge of yours, so just...
Yes, please.
Wanted to see if we, if that's something we want to...
I would be, if long as we have a majority, I'd be willing to try to schedule something with the county as soon as possible, really, because there's a lot of things going on that revolve to our budget, so, thank you. Yes, if you're okay with that.
Of course.
See what we can do?
Yep.
Thank you. All right, the next item is the City Managers' Report. Utility billing stuff, it looks like?
Just our standard report.
Public comment on the City Managers' Report?
Just that we need a new City Manager.
Public comment in the room or elsewhere?
There's none on Zoom.
So we'll move on to the commission calendar. It's like we won't be meeting for a while. We'll be in...
Two weeks.
Is everything covered as far as ribbon cuttings go?
I think so. Let me take a quick look.
Okay, let me know if anything needs filled in. Try to do so. All right. There's nothing else on the commission calendar items. I guess we'll go ahead and end the live broadcast at this time.
Are we going to willingly ignore the legislature's instructions by ending the broadcast? Pretty sure the legislature stated that the broadcast may include public comment, if they're not.
That law does not go into effect until July 1.
Okay, thank you.
Who speaks?
Thank you, sir. Okay, anything else?